Sorry, your moment of commentary was not on camera. I apologize. Fire exits are to my left and right of council papers. Roll call, please.
Mayor Foster. Councilmember Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Council President Kim Chong.
Here.
Councilmember Prestone.
Here.
Councilmember Vargas.
Here.
Attorney attorney Shaw.
Here.
Attorney Administrator Huber.
Here.
Okay, so tonight we have three discussion items. Terry, do you want to jump right in into Aitken North Second Avenue redevelopment?
Sure, thanks. And Councilmember Hale. Chime in, but essentially, with regard to Aitken North Second Avenue, which if you may remember last year, we adopted a redevelopment plan for basically the adaptive reuse of a small lab building on North Second Avenue, kind of in between Cleveland and Wayside Drive. And actually, I have a couple of slides I did pull up. But we've been working, and when I say "we," Chris Casenza and myself as staff have been working with the property owner now on the property toward a compliant plan, you know, basically a plan for the site that complies with the redevelopment plan that was adopted. And we're finally at that point. And one of the things that we all discussed, there was some neighbor feedback when we adopted the plan. So we did hold a community, a neighbor meeting, where we introduced them to the team that's going to be rehabbing the property. And they presented their concepts, asked questions. And so, but coming out of that meeting, there was some feedback, what was mostly about construction management, wouldn't you say, Matt? And kind of being sensitive to the neighbors during construction. I think they were generally comfortable with the proposal and felt like their concerns had been listened to. So with that, procedurally, the next step for them to proceed with their project, first, they need to have a redevelopment agreement in place with the borough, because this is in a redevelopment area under the rehab statute. But still, it's a redevelopment plan. And a redevelopment plan requires an agreement between us and the entity that's developing the property. This is a, I do have a draft of the redevelopment agreement, which I can circulate after the meeting. But when you see it, it's a very vanilla. It's basically, this is the project, and you're going to do it. And you can go to the planning board. And their next move is to go to the planning board. They can't do that unless there's an agreement in place with the borough. That's one of the conditions of our redevelopment plan. So what I wanted to do tonight was just kind of give you a similar presentation to what the neighbors saw, just to catch you up with where the project is. And if you're comfortable with where we are, I'd like to put a resolution together with Joe Baumann's help to authorize this redevelopment agreement. So let me just maybe make it most sense to walk through the slides and then we can talk about it. Does that work, Matt?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that the meeting, the meeting that we had between the redevelopment or the team doing this and the neighbors, I thought went really well. You know, they asked good questions. They asked, you know, like, they didn't come in just sort of fighting each other. They came in, I think, sort of trying to figure out, making sure everybody was heard, everybody had good thoughts and ideas. And I think it went really well. So I think that, you know, the neighbors know that it's coming. They know what it is. And I think they're pretty happy. They're okay with it, is how I would say it.
And the, just as a reminder, this is the first page of the redevelopment plan. A little bit far for some of us, but that's the building, kind of looking at it going, you're looking towards Cleveland with your back kind of wayside on the corner there. I'm going to show a couple of other slides from the plan. So where my hand is shaking over there, that's the site. This is, you know, hard to see from there, but just so you know. And then that's just another view of the building. Again, I know personally, and I don't live far away, I must have gone past it 100 times without noticing it once. It's kind of nondescript. What's interesting about it is it's one story at the front, and it kind of goes up to a two-story in the back. The front was kind of an add-on to the building at some point historically. That's just another view. And so, we had really good representation. This is the site here. Here's the Wayside Road. Here's North Second. Here's Cleveland. And neighbors from across the street, neighbors from behind, you know, directly kind of adjacent to the property were able to attend. So that was really great. So this is probably hard to read from there, and I apologize. I'm going to see if I can zoom in. Just give me a second. Sorry, it's a little bit of delay. Sorry. It's a little easier. So this is basically the survey for the property. And it's what they've updated in order to kind of present what they intend to do. And just to orient you, at the bottom is North Second, and to your left is Cleveland, and your right is Wayside. So the property, the footprint of the building isn't changing when I, the height is the same. Everything else is the same. So essentially, what they've done is they've provided four parking spaces here ADA compliant. That was an important thing with this project. And our redevelopment plan requires one space per unit. So what they are proposing is four units. They had looked at different configurations, but the finances just didn't work. And it was just much more involved, and this was something they thought they could support. The, in the back is where they'll be storing the toters for garbage, and they can bring them around. So right now, they're stored here, so I think that will be an improvement. There's a little bit of a, kind of a shed roof back here that is being removed as required by the plan. They're going to put an awning, but that's also where they'll have bicycle storage, covered bicycle storage for the occupants. And they'll also be providing bike storage in the units as well, if requested, you know, through hooks and things like that. So trying to think about, you know, multimodal to the extent we can, being so close to New Brunswick and everything. And that's about it. And then just around this left kind of portion, there's some pavement they're actually pulling up. It is pretty much 100% impervious coverage as it is. They're pulling this up in part to reduce the impervious coverage. And there's also, some of that pavement is not on their property. So they're also pulling back off where appropriate. There's a fence that does, you know, screen from the neighboring house. It belongs to the neighboring house. So there will be slightly less pervious pavement, I mean impervious pavement, when they're done, but mostly kind of this cleanup along the perimeter. And somewhat back here, there is a big retaining wall at the rear of the property that's actually on the neighbor's property. So they're really not proposing any change to the waste stormwater drains from the site. And we haven't heard of any nuisance issues through the course of this project. And then I'm going to flip to you, and I'm not the best at explaining floor plans, but just to give you an idea, sorry, I got a little smaller so it fits. Ask AI Assistant, leave me alone. But essentially, on the first level, there's three units. And this is kind of what they're calling Unit One. They're two-bedroom units. Unit Two and Unit Three here, bedroom, bathroom, you know, the usual things you'd have. There is, on the second floor, that's the basement, which is not going to be open to the tenants, but it is maintenance area for the owners of the building and to maintain the building. And then there's a unit on the top as well. And it'll access through some stairs in the building. So it's pretty straightforward, again, two bedrooms. Here were some renderings I should emphasize, as they did. These are highly conceptual. It's just to give a feeling for the colors and the palette and some of the materials that may look. This is not the windows where they're going to be, you know. This is really more to give a feel. I could also say, you know, they don't have a front lawn like that to play with.
And they don't expect a Ferrari in the back?
Yeah, they don't. What's challenging with landscaping is the front of the building is right on the sidewalk. So they've got probably a three-to-four-foot strip to work with. But they are going to refresh it. They have this, you know, and try to just dress it up to the best of their abilities. That might be my last image. So essentially, this is what they're doing. They're putting a residential use, it is an apartment building for a family in a residential primarily neighborhood. And we think it fits, and we'd like to recommend it move ahead. You know, at this point, it's up to the planning board to review from our perspective that they've answered the feasibility questions that we feel comfortable recommending to the council that we move ahead.
Their target market, just to say, is they think they're going to be commuters, people who are, want to take either a bike or a scooter to the train station to go to New York or Philly. Young professionals is what they're anticipating that's the market.
And one of the, one of the concerns that was raised by some of the neighbors, I wouldn't say all, was what about parking? Because the odds are, there may not be just four cars related to four units. And it's our estimation, not, we didn't do a formal study, but having, I live in that area, I know there, there is on-street parking on Second to especially to accommodate guests that may come and go. There may be days, like if someone else is having a gathering or, you know, there's, like in any neighborhood, there may be days where it's trickier than others. But we feel pretty confident it can accommodate that they have what they need to make it work. So that, I just wanted to reflect that one concern to come.
Good question. So with four units, would one of them be affordable, or they're just, they don't?
They couldn't make it work. That was one of the, we don't have the ability to do any kind of financial incentives on the site, at least not tax ones, because it's not in a redevelopment area. And when they looked at the numbers and the amount of construction costs went up a lot to try to fit the fifth unit or the sixth unit, depending on what they were looking at, two options. The parking was a constraint on that too, because we required one per unit. And as you saw, four just kind of fits, they could have demolished a portion of the building and gotten a fifth unit. But when they ran their numbers, they couldn't make it work, and our ordinance only requires it above four units. So we didn't impose that.
That's okay. We still need more housing.
That's kind of where I landed on it. I was disappointed for sure. But more housing, and it's a different kind of housing in this neighborhood. It'll be interesting to see. I tend to agree that there, you know, somebody who has a lot of cars isn't going to be necessarily attracted to that location. Or have, need to have a parking spot right outside there. That's not necessarily going to be for that. So it'll be interesting to see. But it's, again, four units. The impact, I think, is manageable.
I love it. Let's move it.
So we're putting the, so yeah, any other questions? But I appreciate they've been good to work with. And I should mention, they're also from town.
They're local.
They're local, just kind of a partnership of a few members that have bought a couple of their properties in town, and they saw this opportunity and, you know, jumped on it.
Was there any discussion about, I mean, I think it looks beautiful. I mean, that rendering was actually very.
Yeah, I just, it has no trees or neighbors or anything, you know, like, so I just don't want anybody to think it's going to look just like that.
But I agree. I mean, that type of housing is important. It's kind of that light-up zone, you know, kind of feel. And I think it really deserves a really tight demographic. But is there, was there any discussion about landscaping before? Is there?
We did, I thought it'd probably be something they present more at the planning board. We, the plan does indicate they are supposed to refresh the front, and I'm sure we'll advise them to do native as best we can. But they really have very little area to work with.
Is there anything they can do on the, as Phil George says, on the verge? Is that, or is that?
That's ours.
Well, right.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, again, very, very narrow. I mean, we could certainly look, I don't even recall if there's a street tree or one could go there. We could certainly talk about that.
Cool. I don't know, was there any talk of any redesign standards or environmentally friendly?
I mean, again, it's a, it's a small project. It was, it was difficult. I mean, they're going to use Energy Star, you know, appliances and things like that. But we didn't really push these, that, you know. We felt like some of the sustainability cred is the fact that they're using the building that they're in as opposed to knocking it all down and throwing it in the garbage. So I felt like that had sustainability points. Yeah, but that's a, that's a fair point.
There's, you know, there may just be things that aren't necessarily, that are like more or less.
I didn't have any obvious ones to suggest, nor did Chris, but, you know, we can certainly encourage it.
Maybe like electric appliances that are like similar cost. It's just a matter of thinking to make that choice. It's a good point. Nothing to, you know.
I don't know that building can support one.
It would be cool, as well, and electrical.
Well, it's worth a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I have no skin in that. I mean, we can certainly, maybe what we could do is give them some flexibility, but put it in the agreement that we want to see that they made it steps toward things like this. And then that way, they have to kind of, we can hold to that a little bit. I don't see that being a huge lift.
Terry, is that, that building isn't in use now, right? But it's always open. What do you mean, like? Like it's open, you could just go in there? At one point, it wasn't, like, I didn't know if it was. You tried to go in? Well, they missed, the FedEx package was delivered there by mistake. And so you can just go in there. I didn't, I thought it was in use.
Sounds like you're having fun in buildings.
No.
I didn't know that. I mean, now that somebody, I don't know how long ago that happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've, they've owned the property, I don't think, a year. So I would hope they would have secured the property, but I can certainly mention that.
Yeah.
I have not heard it, and there are a lot of neighbors who have very close eyes on the place, and they didn't break it up in our meeting. It was, there was a time where it was for sale, where I could see maybe that the realtor didn't secure the place or something like that. That could have happened. Okay. Cool, thank you. Yeah. I'm happy that they, you know.
And New Jersey Film Ready. Matt? Terry?
I'll just jump in. I mean, we did discuss this at the last economic development meeting, but essentially, we're pursuing film-ready certification. The state of New Jersey has a film-ready commission to support basically the industry that they're trying to build in New Jersey. And one of the things towns can do is make themselves basically more friendly and ready to go should a film set, film crew need a set that looks like Highland Park in some way, shape, or form or building. So there are some steps we have to take. The first, and I'm cheating by looking at the list here, is how to become a film-ready community workshop, which Rituja has taken. Chief Abrams went to one that's specific to law enforcement. So we've now met that criteria. We're going to have to designate a film-ready liaison who will probably be, it has to be a staff person, but probably myself or Rituja, because it's kind of like the lead person on it from a staff perspective. And then we have to adopt a formal permit process. And the best way to do that is by an ordinance. And you don't have to do an ordinance, but that seems to be standard practice. It also allows you the benefit of fees. You can establish, you can have permit fees to do. So that's a slight, a small revenue stream. But I should point out that one of the major perks of this program is not just the fees that the municipality can make for either permitting or use of its own facilities, but it's the kind of spin-off benefits to the community when a crew comes in town and buys, you know, 50 cups of coffee from Dunkin' and Penn Stock, you know, buys their catering from Maray, you know, what have you.
There's 100, at a regular film shoot, there's at least 150 people who need to be fed. And the quickest way to make that happen is to go to someplace in town and get 150 people fed. And that's an enormous benefit for, you know, any of our restaurants.
Right. And in addition, they want to know any people who are in your community that might have skills that work well for crews, like filming, videographers, photographers, you know, all that stuff, so.
Phil George can build a set. I know.
They want to know, because they, you know, they don't want to, you know, the less schlepping they have to do, that is better. And basically, we would do an ordinance that would basically enable the permitting process, set the parameters, also for when you need like police approval and hours of operation, things like that. There's a, thankfully, the state actually did do a model ordinance, unlike with some other of their initiatives in the last few years that have been complicated for towns. And in this case, it's pretty straightforward. We have a draft, we're going to share it with Sopna, because I know you've worked with your communities in some other towns to adopt some ordinances, especially to see, we want to be competitive with our fees, you know, for what we've got. Well, what we will also get to do, and this is kind of the fun brainstorm part, is upload locations, either municipally-controlled locations that we think would be good potential sets. So this room that we're sitting in, I've actually been approached before about, I need a courtroom. And I mean it, you know, in this part of it. And so even our modest, you know, not every place has to be fancy. Like, you know, they have, they need all kinds of film sets. So we would, we would put this up, and then we'd have a photo, and, you know. And then it enables that crew to decide if there's even a there there before they waste their time, my time, their time. You know, we'd have our room occupancies, all that stuff, all up there, ready to go. So we have to, we can have as many locations as we want, but, you know, they want us to have at least 10, you know, to kind of fill out the thing. So, you know, clearly.
If you have ideas about, I mean, obviously, the high schools, I think the high school is going to be.
I think we got high school, the auditorium in the high school, in the front of the high.
The front of the high school.
It's a classic high school lawn. I mean, it really.
It's like the Doughboy.
The Doughboy. You know, there's a lot of, wait, rows. I mean, we had a potential interest in Park Pub that found us at one time. So it, and so the flip side is, we can think about municipal and public properties, but also private properties that we want, we can go and encourage them, we can't do it for them. private properties that we want, we can go and encourage them, we can't do it for them.